The city of Bristol, providing beautiful parks, economic development, and a family-friendly community.
Good evening. Welcome to the Joint Board, Wednesday, August 10th. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I please ask the members to introduce themselves, standing my far right?
Mike LaMoth, Board of Finance.
John Smith, Board of Finance.
Orlando Calpe, Board of Finance.
Mike Freeny, Board of Finance.
Derek Chenchelski, Board of Finance.
Ron Burns, Board of Finance.
Anthony DiMatto, City Council.
Jody Zills-Gagnon, City Council.
Cheryl Tebow, Board of Finance.
Calvin Brown, City Council.
Mary Fortier, City Council.
Jake Carrier, Board of Finance.
Dave Mills, City Council.
Assistant Dawn Labella.
Mayor Ken Cottke. Item number one.
Approval of minutes of the regular Joint Board meeting on July 12th, 2016.
Motion main seconded, discussion. Hearing not all in favor. Aye. Opposed, motion passes. Item number two.
Is the consent calendar, there are seven items. Two A is to make an additional appropriation of $1,339,000 within the Capital Projects Fund for the remediation of 894 Middle Street. Two B is to make a transfer of $50,468.79 for the inter-district cooperative program as of June 30th, 2016. Two C is to make an additional appropriation of $25,024 for the quality enhancement program. Five, two D is to make an additional appropriation of $2,900,052 for the school readiness program. Two E is to make an additional appropriation of $5,700 for the grandparents-as-parents program. And two F is to make an additional appropriation of $530 funded by the Good Cell Trust as of June 30th, 2016. And last but not least, two G is to make a decrease in appropriation of $1,532 within the Parks Department as of June 30th, 2016.
Motion to approve. Motion main seconded, discussion. Hearing not all in favor. Aye. Opposed, motion passes. Item number three.
To make an additional appropriation of $121,000 for the Frederick Street sanitary sewer replacement funded by WPC Capital non-recurring undesignated fund balance.
Motion main seconded, discussion. Hearing not all in favor. Aye. Opposed, motion passes. Item number four.
To transfer $16,500 from the general fund contingency account to operating transfers out special revenue.
Motion main seconded, discussion. Hearing not all in favor. Aye. Opposed, motion passes. Item number five.
To make an additional appropriation of $16,500 within the special grants and donations fund funded by an operating transfer in general fund.
Motion main seconded, discussion. Hearing not all in favor. Aye. Opposed, motion passes. Item number seven.
Six to transfer $667,050 from the contractual obligations account to various police department salary accounts for negotiated salary increases.
So moved.
Second.
Motion main seconded, discussion. Hearing not all in favor. Aye. Opposed, motion passes. Item number seven.
Is the monthly revenue and expense report.
Good evening, Mayor, and Joint Board members. It's not too much to report as far as financially speaking in the city. Everything is going along fine. Collection rates are doing fine. Our revenues are fine. Expenditures are going along the normal percentage for summertime. But we do have one auspicious occasion that we can celebrate this evening. You may recall during the budget process, as far as the transition in my office goes, we initiated a certified public finance officer's examination for Robin Manuel. I had that 15 years ago. It's a five-part examination. It certifies finance officers across the country. It's on a national level to become certified, a five-part exam. Robin did complete the first exam for capital budgeting a year ago at this time approximately, and it's good timing because we are going to be dealing with obviously a capital budgeting. But more recently, she just passed the debt service examination. And obviously, once again, timing is great since we're going to go out with one of the larger issuances. I passed the exam, but it's old news. It's 15 years ago. What she's passed is more current and relevant, and I'd like to congratulate her on that.
Congratulations.
There are three more exams to go: risk management, investments, purchasing, and basic accounting. So she was taking one a year or so, and we'll swim about a year and a half or so, she'll be a certified public finance officer. Other than that, I really have nothing to report. Hi, John.
Any questions?
You can only take one. You could take two, but the problem is, and I've discussed this with her, is that there's one in the spring, one in the fall. She just took it and just passed the late spring. But in the fall, we have the auditors in. Oh, no, you can. You can take two. It's done on each state and also on a national level at the conference. If you go to the national conference, that's why I did it. But she's taken it in Connecticut with just a few other students. Tough exam, but timing is perfect. Now, she's got capital budgeting under her belt, and it's related to debt service, so it's perfect. And it's more relevant than when I took it because there's a lot of current updates that have occurred. So really, really happy for her.
Any other questions? Thank you, Glenn.
You're welcome.
Any other business? Chairwoman?
Congratulations, Robin. That is such an exciting topic as well, debt management. The other ones sound more exciting, though. You know, if you're an accountant, you get it. Mr. Mayor, Joint Board, I just wanted to share something, and I had sent an email out to the Board of Finance last Friday. And I know that other people have, you know, heard about this, but I just, I wanted to share and give an update. And I know at past meetings, we've asked for updates on the Memorial Boulevard project. But I'm going to just actually read the email because it would be easier, so please excuse that. The purpose of this email is not for discussion purpose, as discussion back and forth is violation of FOIA, so I start it with rules, of course. But since I don't particularly like surprises, I wanted to share this with you now so you have time to think about this. Earlier this week, members of the newly-formed MBS Board, excuse me, not the official name, met with the mayor to provide an update. He asked if I'd be willing to participate, and I did so by phone. One of their asks was for the city to commit to the additional $5.6 million necessary for Phase One completion in order to stay on schedule to go out to bid in early 2007. As you're aware, there was a very robust discussion.
Seventeen?
Seventeen, 2017, excuse me. As you're aware, there was a very robust discussion on this matter during the budget session, especially in the 10-year CIP committee meeting. The outcome of the meeting was a budget of $5 million. The balance of the phase was expected to be raised from the other outside sources by the nonprofit board. The budget was then approved by the Board of Finance and Joint Board. As it was already an item on the budget, the authority to increase could come directly from the Board of Finance without going back to CIP, of course, then forward to Joint Board. I'm just going to stop reading there, and I'll go. I just want to add a little bit here that when this project was originally presented at the conclusion, and it was a very dynamic group, almost two years working feverishly to really look at that building. And the idea of a cultural center is dynamic and exciting. And I myself was a member of that committee, and I was, I still am excited about it. And the concerts proved there was an appetite for this. But at the time that we came out of that session, the Phase One appeared to be hovering around the $7 million mark. When we were talking budgets, it was approaching $10 million. And as of last week, we're now over the $11 million mark, or close to the $11 million mark. The architectural designs are not final yet. It has not gone out to bid. So there is, this is huge. This is huge. And the view at the time, or at least my personal view, was that there needs to be a partnership and that the nonprofits should have some in this. And I believe the $5 million was what the Board at the time felt was fair, and the committees and so forth. Because they've come to this ask, I am, we're not, I am not prepared to go beyond what is already approved, but I have asked for this to be put on the agenda for the next Board of Finance meeting so that we can talk about it. It might be important for the Boulevard Committee to make a presentation. But at this point, because the Board of Finance's task is to guard, safeguard the assets of the city, to guard the checkbook, to protect the taxpayers, I'm not sure. I would feel better knowing that the taxpayers were 100 behind this. And I'm proposing to the council that we consider this to be put out for referendum if we're going to approve more money on this project. It's a huge nut to swallow. It's a lot of money, and it had a shaky financial performer. So investing this money doesn't guarantee the financial success, although there's some great people involved in it, and I know they're going to put their heart and soul into it. I just wanted to bring that up because I feel I would be remiss if I did not share my thoughts and let you know what will be an item of discussion on the next Board of Finance meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Discussion? Go ahead.
If we're going to have this presented to us, which I think is a good idea, by the way, if we're going to have this presented to us, I think in light of the long-running history that we've had with the school, and now we're looking to go forward considerably longer, it may help in the referendum if we know what kind of revenues maybe the city could look to bring in from something like this, maybe an ongoing concert series or something like that. Because I think if there's some sort of appreciable revenues that we can see, maybe it'll be a little easier to swallow a bit or not.
Well, from what I understand, Mike, is the revenues would be the, belong to the nonprofit. Okay.
Okay. All the revenues.
There was an, there was an item three where they also were looking in this, this is an MOU, it's a draft MOU. It's not final. But it was a big ask. Item number three was to try to see if the city could contribute to the operations side. We didn't get to item three because item two just was kind of staggering. And it, I just feel at this point, you know, I would like to know that the taxpayers fully, fully are behind an 11 million or approaching over an $11 million project, and would be comfortable with that before I go forward. But, and we have not asked the committee to come forward. I'm bringing that up. I emailed you because you're the committee that, you know, I chair, and so I just wanted to bring everybody into the loop because I don't like surprises.
I have a question through the chair. Cheryl, are you envisioning that we do something about this referendum issue at council this evening? Or are you, again, just discussing it and perhaps after Finance Board meets and talks about it, you would then formally ask council to make that a referendum item?
Well, I wouldn't expect you to make a decision tonight. You're just being, you know, we were just, you know, got this information last week. So it's all new, and it's not final, and it's not a signed agreement. But it is a huge item. And I have to tell you, I've had taxpayers tell me both ways. The Board of Finance does not have the authority to call a referendum. But I'm asking you to consider that because if the Board of Finance chooses not to put any more money towards this project, it stays at the $5 million.
I understand. I want to be clear, this is a non-binding referendum, right? We don't have any provision for an actual referendum that would be.
That's, that's correct. It would be a non-binding referendum that the council would vote to put on the ballot. But it would give us, and I do support this, by the way. I've always supported referendum on big-ticket items. And I think it would give us, as the policymakers and decision-makers, a flavor of what the community is willing to swallow. This additional $5.4 million that they're asking for, $5.6, whatever it was, is nearly $2. So that's a big number.
Okay. And I have one other question. What is the deadline for getting something on the November ballot? I would think that we're approaching that.
You are. You're probably weeks away from my having to notify the Secretary of State of anything that goes on the November ballot.
So it would have to be some sort of special meeting before our September meeting, probably?
Comment?
Likely. There may be other issues, too, as to how we'd go about, because the way referenda is written in our charter is not like it is in other towns. So Corp. Counsel may, may have more information with respect to the council just putting something up for a referenda that normally is a question that goes through charter revision. Most of our questions that go on the ballot either go through charter revision or are presented to us from the state.
Okay. Thank you.
You're on.
Just a couple of thoughts. First of all, I don't think, I don't think the Building Committee, which is charged with the renovation of this building, has made a request for any additional funds, number one. In fact, we had a meeting last night, and we didn't even discuss it. The chairman of the Building Committee is here. Secondly, in the last two or three years, we have spent, let's see, Muzzy Field, two new athletic fields at each high, one at each high school, Muzzy Field, two new schools, all of these things, no referendum mentioned. We spent significant amount of time at the Capital Improvement Committee meeting discussing this project, also with the Board of Finance. No referendum mentioned. I just don't think we can pick and choose which ones we want to send to referendum. If we want to have referendums over a certain amount of money for major projects, let's change the charter. The charter hasn't been changed, and the way I read the charter is, I don't think the council has the authority to do a referendum. I think you have to get some, some signatures from somebody. You know, not, not that it's a bad thing, but, but we have, again, from what I read, we have a representative form of government in this city. I elect, I vote for council people to make decisions on my behalf. We don't have a town meeting form of government. We don't have a charter provision that says any project over a certain amount of money has to go to referendum. We don't have that. So I would think it's more appropriate to have Marie O'Brien's committee, the nonprofit board, and Frank Stosky's committee make a detailed presentation at the next Board of Finance meeting, and then you can react to the fact if they ask for money or if they don't. Because at this point, the Building Committee, which is charged with renovating that project, the Building Committee is charged with the $5 million, not the BIDC, or whatever the name of that group is. Building Committee's charged with that, and it has not asked for any additional funds at all.
Well, then, they were physically there, so.
No, they weren't.
No. I'm saying they were at a meeting last week.
Frank Stosky was not at that.
Not Frank, but the Marie O'Brien.
Right. She's not on the Building Committee, Phil.
Okay. Well, somebody's put an ask out for the $5.4. But regardless, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Can you go out to bid unless you have funding secured?
No. Because you can't sign a contract.
Okay.
Cannot sign a contract unless there are funds in place.
And what is your timeline to go out to bid?
Well, the original timeline was hopefully to go out to bid in, in, in early 2017, so you take advantage of the bidding plan. If, if you don't have the funds, then you can't do that. At least, I would recommend you don't do that because it costs contractors money to bid a project. If you get low bids and someone says, okay, we want to sign a contract, and you don't have funds, you can't, you cannot sign a contract. So that, the other side of that is, if we, if we continue to delay this, and the project does not come to fruition, we have spent, I'm not sure how much to date on, on the architect and engineering fees, but we have spent money. And I don't want to continue to spend good money after bad if, in fact, we're not going to bring this project to fruition. So all the more important, it seems to me, to have Frank's group and Marie's group make a detailed presentation to the Joint Board, actually, maybe not just the Board of Finance, the Joint Board, so that everybody has a clear understanding of where it is, where, where they want to go. And then we can make an informed decision as opposed to making a decision based upon a conversation that Marie and company, as I understand it, had with the mayor and with you. And again, I don't believe they have the authority to ask for any additional funds because they're, they're not the agency that's charged with the renovation of that building.
Can I ask you?
Through the chair.
Oh.
Pardon me.
Nope.
May I, if you don't mind?
You may.
I just want to quickly second Mr. Smith's idea. I would strongly be in favor of the Building Committee and Ms. O'Brien's committee coming before the Joint Board and giving a detailed presentation. I think that sort of honors the process of all of this a little better, and that's probably a better way for us all to make an informed decision on what to do next. So I just wanted to second that point from Mr. Smith.
I would just like to say that I would like to honor the taxpayers who felt they were getting into a $7 million investment that it has now mushroomed to almost 12, that there's a problem with that as well. And so whether that project gets, I don't know the answer. And that's why it's a huge investment. And yes, I, I love the Boulevard, but, you know, are all our taxpayers ready to go on board with this kind of investment? And yes, we spend money on other things, but a lot of them are, you know, properties and buildings we already have. This is a building, and let alone the value of the building, that will be eventually turned over to a nonprofit. And I think that it's a totally different animal, and I just, you know, it's, I just feel my role is to protect the taxpayer, and so I will vocally speak this way. So thank you.
No, Cheryl, you raise some very valid points for the mayor, some very valid points. And again, I think all of those questions, answers would be forthcoming when, if, in fact, Marie and Frank made a collective of presentation so that we all can ask. Because you're right. I mean, I'm not sure I ever thought it was a $7 million project, but having a great deal of familiarity with that building, since I happened to go to school there, then I taught there, then it was part of my purview when I was still over at the, at the school system, one of the major issues of that building is the infrastructure. And I remember, frankly, somebody wanting to buy it, and they were going to spend $2 million to renovate the whole building. The mechanical side alone, just the mechanicals, are in excess, well in excess of that. And you can't do anything without, without the mechanical side. You just can't. And then you have the theater, and then you have something else. So, and the revenues, revenue side is an important package as well. So again, I, I think Marie and Frank make a joint, maybe a special meeting, just to hear all of the, all of the, all of the conversations that have had along with the architect, and maybe it needs a special, because I think it's probably going to take at least two or three hours to really do it justice, frankly.
It would definitely be good if they're on the same page before one group comes seeking additional funds with an MOU.
Just one question for clarification. So Marie's group for the Boulevard is associated with the nonprofit, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Frank's group is the Building Committee, which is part of the city organization. Wouldn't Marie be approaching the Donation Committee, as other nonprofits do, as opposed to coming forward for the city money? And wouldn't that be separate from the Building Committee? So aren't we mixing here?
Yeah. I think it's just its own little animal, to be honest with you, Orlando. It's not, you're, it, we still own that building. It's a big difference, so.
Yeah, this is a vulnerable group, you want to donations committee.
Any other discussion on this? Motion to adjourn?
No.
Motion made, seconded, discussion. All in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion passes. Council meeting starting in five minutes.
Looks like he might have a busy.
Good evening. Welcome to the City Council meeting, Wednesday, August 10th. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moment of silence for a Troops in active duty. Item number two. Wait, first, can I have the council introduce themselves, starting my far right?
Calvin Brown, District One.
Anthony DiMatto, District One.
Jody Zills-Gagnon, District Two.
Dave Mills, District Three.
Mary Fortier, District Three. Town Clerk Theresa Pack.
Assistant Dawn Labella.
And Mayor Ken Cottke. Councilman Plesky is on vacation this week. Item number two.
Approval of minutes of the regular City Council meeting on July 12th, 2016, and the special City Council meeting and public hearing on June 30th, 2016, and special joint City Council and charter revision meeting on July 12th, 2016.
So moved.
Second. Motion main seconded, discussion. Hearing not all in favor. Aye. Opposed, motion passes. Before we go to item three, public participation, I'd just like to say a few things. And I've, I've made a couple of notes just so I don't get all messed up. As you know, an investigation into my conduct has been concluded. About eight, about eight years ago, I had a brief relationship with a female city employee. This is a huge, personal mistake. I've embarrassed myself, my family, and this entire situation has turned my life upside down, and I know I deserve it. I'm so sorry for the hurt that I've caused my fiancee. This is not anything that I ever wanted my son, my family, or the woman I love to read on the front page of the paper. I can't change what happened. I certainly wish I could. But I have learned from these mistakes, and I strive to be a better person. I regret my situation has distracted from our focus, and that should be continuing to improve Bristol, and that is not acceptable. I ask that the people of Bristol continue to place their trust in me as we work tirelessly to make Bristol a better place. Item number three.
It's public participation.
Roger B. Michel.
My name is Roger B. Michel, and I reside at 13 Jerome Avenue here in Bristol. Tonight, I would like to begin by respectfully requesting that the professional courtesy be extended to me with regard to the time limit to speak at this public hearing. I have devoted 12 years of my life in the service of, as a state representative. I have demonstrated my commitment to the city and earned the respect that goes with the elected position. My presentation is less than eight minutes in length. On August 11th, 2015, almost one year to the day, I made a presentation to the elected body sitting where you are this evening. This evening, I would like to update you and the city on some unpleasant actions, observations, and findings. First, I'd like to add to the list of crimes involved in my property that I mentioned last year's presentation. On January 26th of this year, at approximately 1:30 a.m., two criminal individuals attempted to steal my snowplow truck parked adjacent to my barber shop. They caused $5,000 in vehicle damage plus the expense and inconvenience of contracting out my plowing. Last week, on August 4th, someone tried to push their way through my eight-foot privacy fence to gain access into my backyard, and also tried to pull and rip apart support boards and other parts of the fence. They have been trespassing, broken glass, trash, and property thrown on my property. On a related topic, our senior population is growing, and so is the Section 8 inhabitants. They each have philosophies that are directly opposed to each other. The seniors have given to the system all of their lives, and now the criminal greedy are breaking in and taking from them. Please do not wait until they hit your home or a family member before the Section 8 flu is addressed and eradicated. I was informed early this morning that this had happened to one of my senior relatives. This is all due to the demographics of their neighborhoods. For this reason, I am working with a contractor to design and construct a garage next to my shop. This will complete the unfortunate need for the fortress around my home and my business. I will need to purchase building permits and pay additional property taxes. The crime rate in my neighborhood makes this action necessary. I do not believe this is a fair way to increase revenue for the city. And now, second, on the subject of permits, it recently took a contractor 10 days to obtain a permit to have six 42-inch holes inspected. These holes are basically the foundation for a pergola that support wisteria mines. The pointless and unnecessary delay cost the contractor valuable, valuable time and added to the construction cost as well. Other municipalities take 10 minutes, not 10 days. Although I've heard in Bristol, back room, closed-door permit approvals take seconds. Through my business, I have come in contact with contractors who refuse to do business in Bristol due to some annoyance from the Bristol Building Department. This is not fair to Bristol residents when it comes to the bidding between quality contractors who prefer to remain in the Farmington Valley. Bristol has more than 2,000 permits applied for each year. That is less than eight per day. Bristol's building department is not that busy. Because of the delay experience, I began asking customers and friends if they had or knew or similar experiences with the building department. I was able to collect information on 38 building permit documents and I was able to collect information on 38 building permit documents, and I researched and evaluated them. As a result of my examining, I discovered approximately 30 different zoning and building code violations totaling approximately 106 separate breaches. Some examples: required approvals were not obtained for construction of wetlands and floodplains for certain individuals and corporations. There were seven zoning violations, six violations involving falsified information, nine building code violations, five permits were issued to parties with no home builder's license, 24 cases where permits were required and none were obtained. And the most egregious and costly to the city were 16 cases of reduced charges for permits. These uncollected permit fees totaled $82,000, representing kickbacks and/or windfalls to the property owner and/or contractor. That is an average loss of approximately $5,000 per permit issued. Further adding to the special treatment from the building department from these files, nine had undervalued permit estimates. The worst is where one of the properties was assessed and taxed as land for five years after a nearly $350,000 building was constructed on it. The approximate assessed values, after being calculated with the appropriate yearly mail rates, totaled more than $55,000 of uncollected property tax per year. This is an estimate average of more than $6,000 per property. The total potential discrepancy of uncollected permit fees and uncollected property tax, in the worst case, that's if it happened on every single permit, could be more than $22 million. The source of this information is accurate, and the calculations are based on the samples I acquired. Now, I hope I have your attention, because if only 10% of the yearly permits are given to special handling, that's still more than $2.2 million uncollected money. If only 2%, which is 40, permits, gets a special treatment, then there would be an estimated shortfall of the city of $500,000, again based on my samples. So maybe before you decide to raise permit fees and taxes again, and the good residents have to pay, you should be feared of all. There is another issue, brief issue. There are stories that one of the building inspectors does not have the proper experience for the position. Also, were you aware that a city worker was being paid by another community at the same time he being paid for Bristol taxpayers? There are many more stories like this, but the good residents are afraid to endure harassment and retaliation. So to you, the mayor and the city council, please remember, all residents matter, and to the residents, if you know something, please say something. Thank you for the extra time and your attention.
Roger, can you please get to my office all the information and backup material that you have in regards to these permit fees? Because we will look into it. If you have the information, can you get it to me?
I have to be careful, because again, harassment and the people's careers are at stake. I'll see if somebody's willing, but there's...
Okay. We need to know about it if we can look into it, so.
Okay.
All right? Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night. Paul, and I'm sorry, I can't read this. Yorma?
Dave Mills. The last name is Yorma.
Yorma, okay, I'm close.
I passed.
Okay. Ripley Patton.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak before you this evening. I'll try to be quick. Just saw something in the paper that struck me the wrong way, and I felt like this was the perfect forum to speak on that. Approximately two weeks ago, the Bristol Press published a letter to the editor by a Republican town committee member by the name of Andrew Howe, who I believe sits on Bristol's planning commission. In this letter to the editor, Mr. Howe directly criticized my friend Kate Matthews, who cares enough about Bristol that she's one of a very small group of Bristol residents, along with Sean West, Mr. Duckhoe, I believe his name is, who are willing to leave their families and come speak to you guys every single month. The letter inferred that when Kate takes this podium, she doesn't offer much value. But I do feel necessary to remind you that on the worst moment that this council's had this year, it was Ms. Matthews who got out of that seat, in this audience, and corrected you from, say, on saving Bristol from a very embarrassing moment. That record shows that. That's on YouTube. You can see that. That's true. Mr. Howe slams Kate for her repeated attempts to come here and just get Mr. Cottain, or Mayor Cottain, my apologies, to address the fact that in the closing statement at an October debate that he would support the referendum on the big-ticket items, and so far that hasn't happened. People see that as a big deal. They feel like we have a city that is absolutely united in its desire to save Memorial Boulevard School in its current state, and if that's on the referendum, a lot of people believe that our kids will be dancing on that stage in no time, performing in that auditorium. What Kate said at this podium is not hyperbole. It's not even criticism. In America, we refer to it as democracy. Ronald Reagan, I believe, said, "We, the people, are the ones that tell the government what to do. They are the car, we are the driver." We begin every council meeting, like we did tonight, with a moment of silence for our troops, and I ask all of you on this council to never forget that those men and women are risking life in them every day so that someone like Kate Matthews and any other of the 67,000 people of Bristol can approach this government and hold them accountable for their failure to deliver on a promise if that's what they feel has happened. Believe me when I tell you that whether I've criticized you or not, I appreciate the job that every single one of you does. I know, especially council members, that the pay that you get does not warrant the time, the effort, and the stress that you put into this job. But I hope that you all can understand that this government is only as good as the people who govern it. We can pacify and praise you all day, but the reality is that you're all elected because you're expected to be able to do good things. The thousands and thousands of people who left their homes to vote for you should be all the pacification you need to be effective leaders in this community. Now, I personally know dozens of Bristol residents, very intelligent people of both parties, Republican, Democrat. I know people of no party who are afraid to come before this council out of fear of criticism and public humiliation. This Andrew Howe letter did not help that. It made it worse. So I appeal to all of you, please continue to make Bristol residents, any Bristol resident, feel like they have a place at this podium, no matter whether you agree with them or not. This podium belongs to we, the people, and it should be a safe haven for every single one of us, and right now, it is not. Thank you.
Ripley, one question. Do you support putting Memorial Boulevard project on the referendum?
I believe I would. I believe I would.
All right. Thank you. Eric Carlson.
I was going to say, that's a good theme song, Eric. That's a good theme song.
You have music as you walk to the podium. Eric Carlson has arrived.
You've got a theme song. That's good. Just a quick note to Roger Michelle. I've been a contractor for quite a few years, and your stories about the problems with the building department, it's not limited to Bristol. Trust me, it is not limited to Bristol. Okay, I wanted to come up here to talk about...
Name an address for the record, please.
Eric Carlson, 187 Morningside Drive East, Bristol, Connecticut.
Thank you.
Former city council member. I want to bring up an issue of the city budget and the school budget. Apparently, the school budget is now in a shortfall, and it's not going to balance out, and now I've heard figures of 2.5 million, 2 million, or a million-plus. I do want to urge the city council to work with the school board to deal with this if there is a problem. The taxpayers of the city certainly deserve it. Four years ago, Mark Ward formed a Budget Efficiency Committee, which included city council, finance, and school board, and they had some considerations to save some money. They included consolidation of departments, payroll, maintenance, grounds of facility, and IT. So I would urge the council to get back together with the school board and look back into that. The other thing I want to just bring a little update is that a little over a year ago, my son Michael, who owns a drug treatment center, gave out scholarships available to the city for drug treatment, and since then, he has put eight people through, free of charge. It's been a good program. It's been working. The success rate is fair. You know, the problem with the heroin epidemic and everything else, it's not a one-shot deal, but he has been doing good, and he's helped eight people so far, and he's going to be expanding the program, actually, and it's going to, you know, he's currently in the process of opening another treatment center in Mississippi, and there will be more opportunities.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's a great program your son brought to Bristol. Andrew Howe.
Andrew Howe, 31 South Street Extension. First off, let me say I stand behind every word that I wrote and every word that I do write in every letter. Mr. Mayor and council, I come before you not to throw jabs at certain folks, but to commend this administration for all it has done for this small community of ours. You have brought tax dollars and jobs to our town year after year. Our southeast business park is filling in by the day. Muzzy Field looks better than ever. The Bristol Blues entertain our residents night after night these summer months. Under your administration, you have kick-started the West End realignment, became a highly accessible mayor unlike this town has ever seen. The mayor's Facebook page alone shows that. All-day kindergarten is going successfully. You implemented a senior volunteer tax credit. You have also removed 50 blighted buildings around town and got dozens of absent landlords to clean up their properties. Bingham and O'Connell have been sold for much of the needed senior housing. The Bristol Hospital Mall property is moving along nicely. I just don't understand how people can continue to stand at this podium, month after month, and criticize what has happened in this town under your watchful eye. But I'm here to say for one, I am behind you 100% and will continue to support the endeavors this town has to come. I hope we can get some cooperation throughout the rest of this two-year term and continue to grow Bristol instead of bolstering their political resumes.
Thank you. Tiffany Howe.
My name is Tiffany Anhow. My address is 31 South Street Extension, here in the city that's all heart Bristol. My message is a little different, but if you bear with me, it's only one page long. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, and most importantly, my neighbors. I'd like to start with a few definitions, if you'll bear with me. Merriam-Webster defines resident as a person living in a particular place, usually for a long time. Look around. We each can be described as residents of the Bristol community. Community is defined by Merriam-Webster as a group of residents in a city, town, or neighborhood. You see, it isn't the buildings or the roads. Our community is built by each of us, like building blocks. That's why I've chosen to bring my message to my community. I am one of these building blocks. My message to share is one of positivity. What is positivity? The last definition from Merriam-Webster is positivity is the quality or state of being positive. It's not simply saying that we must smile and stay upbeat, but that's a great place to start. It has to start somewhere. Positivity for Bristol looks like new businesses, cleaning up blight, a full police force, renovated fire stations, and full-day kindergarten, just to name a few, each of these accomplished under our current local government. It takes people, though, to actually implement these positive changes. Buildings don't erect themselves, and children certainly don't teach themselves. That's why being a positive building block in the structure of Bristol is so very important. How do we keep positivity rolling? The answer, undeniably, lies within ourselves. We, as residents of this one city, we owe it to ourselves, our children's, and our neighbors, to be a shining light for each other. Whatever isn't helpful usually ends up hurtful. I refuse to build my community on anything less. There have been many hurtful things done and said in and about Bristol just as of late. It's truly disappointing. I'm here to urge you, my friends, my neighbors, please don't be distracted from the bigger picture. Please don't get so caught up in the negative hometown manipulation that we forget to shine our lights upon each other. No major invention or breakthrough ever happened without a trail of mistakes and setbacks leading to the ultimate result. Bristol is very much the same. Yes, we have our setbacks, but we are bound for greatness if we choose positive progress. My four children, the next generation, have a hometown to be proud of. I'm teaching them how to be a responsible building block, how to be a beacon unto others. Bristol, everyone and everything in it, is worth putting the positive into. Negative only breeds negative. Why waste the time, the resources, and the energy? If it isn't helpful, it's hurtful. It's up to us as individuals to be the difference that we want in our community, each building block becoming a part of something bigger than itself. We are the heart of Bristol. I appreciate the forum to be heard tonight, and I'll leave you with the same challenge I give my family every single day before we leave to start our days. What are we going to do today? Make today count. Have a good night.
Thank you. Renee Prashad.
Rainy Brantford at 8 Briar Road. I live on the corner of Briar Road and East Road, and for years, I've been having a problem with water washing down from East Road, costing my neighbor's driveway, and washing out some of my property in the back. I talked to the engineer department maybe four weeks ago, and they said they were going to replace the fellow's apron, and they were going to patch the curb down where the existing drain is. But then last week, they had, they put a new concrete curb on the other side of Briar Road from one end to the other. Now, this week, they told me that they're going to replace the existing drain, but I'd just soon have that drain stayed and have a drain put up above the fellow's driveway so it catches the water before it comes down into my property. And also my curb, I'd like to have a curb that looks like a curb. It doesn't have to be concrete. It's just something that looks halfway decent.
I believe your neighbor emailed us. Did she? Did your neighbor email us?
She might have, yes.
Yeah, so we, I've already talked with the public works director, and we're going to be addressing those issues. She emailed us, I think, this week, a couple days ago.
Yeah, but I'd like to see the drain above the neighbor's driveway so it catches the water before it comes down to his driveway and to my land.
Our engineers will look into that.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
You too.
Sean Rust.
Sean Rust, 53 Lancaster Road. Like to interrupt tonight's reindeer games to give you a brief report. Our regional council of governments has released its 2015 regional profile, and in the summary of findings, it says, "In the near future, the region will be shaped by the retirement of baby boomers." It says, "The population of the outer ring is outpacing the rest of the region." Now, the outer ring being cities on the outskirts, furthest from Bristol, Waterbury, Nogatuck, Ansonia, and Derby. It also says, "In the next 10 years, we're going to see an increase in retirees and a decrease in school-age population." And we've seen from the years 2007 to 2013, the number of births has dropped 14% in the region. Many families have delayed having children due to the economic uncertainty and rising student loan debt. Unemployment in Connecticut and in the region is higher, well, it's higher in the region than it is in the rest of Connecticut, higher in Connecticut than the rest in the country. It's at 7.4%. Some of the drop in unemployment is due to unemployed persons stopping looking for work. The report, which some would call negative, I guess, is, says disproportionately high unemployment among young people rate is 20.5%. For people under 25, 20.5%. The towns of Cheshire and Shelton are the only two towns that have more jobs than people. Jobs are suburbanizing, not going to urban centers. They're suburbanizing. In the last 10 years, the urban core lost jobs while the inner ring saw growth. And in conclusion, a surge in the elderly population will put greater financial burdens on the workforce, leading to new fiscal challenges for municipalities. Budgets will shift from education and youth services towards elderly services. So I ask, do you feel that we're putting all our eggs in the most important basket here? Because I think the most important thing that we should be focused on is getting jobs for these young people, not service jobs, if we're going to put tens of millions of dollars into sustainable development into downtown Bristol. And by the way, the economic profile says healthcare is not expanding. The only thing that's expanding is information technology. So if we're going to build out in the highest concentration of poverty in the city, I believe that census block is listed in the report as over 25% as being in poverty, we're going to have to have jobs for these people. We need to have good jobs. That's the most important thing to the future. That's the most important thing to the future of Bristol. And when we start talking about jobs more than we talk about, let's just put something over there with taxpayer money, then I'll start feeling more positive. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Sean.
Good evening. Tracy Perro, 15 Stonehurst Drive, Bristol. I just wanted to take a few minutes and thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and the folks on the City Council, and all the citizens that serve on various boards and volunteer within the city. Thank you for your time. We've come a long way to make Bristol a better place to work, live, and play, and the city has condemned many blighted houses, attracted more businesses, and brought baseball back to Muzzy Field. Bristol has some beautiful parks, and Memorial Boulevard is one of the nicest town parks that I've ever seen, that honors those who serve our country. We should be very proud. We have a lot more work ahead of us, and I would like to see our city put the politics aside and continue to work together as a team. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael dot co.
Michael J. dot co., 116 Lewis Road. I'm addressing item 5I on the agenda. It has to do with the economic development grants being given by the city, or what I call municipal corporate welfare. See, that Faneuil Incorporated is getting, giving, given, being given, $150,000. Jovec Tool and Die, $55,000. Springfield Spring, $13,000. Amco, $66,000. Connecticut Portable Storage, $150,000 grant, adding up to $434,000. Let's, a little less than a, than a half a million dollars. Grant money, not expected to be paid back. Gifts. This is 87 percent of a half a million dollars. The documents I see that are connected with this are, describe the program the BDA has. This is an incentive. I regard it as a kickback when you think about coming to this city. You're, you're told about this, and it, and it's a, and it's a likely possibility that that's gonna happen. But I regard it as a kickback to anybody coming to this city as a, as a businessman. The city has a history of taking from the little guy. The little guy really doesn't get nothing. My family was not politically connected, but we had something big taken away from us. And this city has always had a, had a history of giving to the, to the wealthy in this town, the wealthy business community ends up with everything. And that's what I see as these grants. Members of the government are, are, most of the time, and the, most of the people sitting on the BDA are part of the business community. Everything for business. I don't, I don't connect government, true government, as being a wing of the business community. Just a little side, I know the mayor had a Economic Development Committee meeting last August, Tuesday, August 2nd. It was approved, that's part of the paperwork here. I scoured the, the website, and I found no meeting, no indication of a meeting being announced. I imagine it was announced on the board out there officially within 48 hours. But you don't want participation of the public to come and hear. I know you're not likely to speak, but to hear what's going on, there's no, there's no indication on the website that that meeting took place. Wall Street was bailed out a couple of years ago. I'm not one, I did not agree with that. This government getting, getting close ties with business in that manner. GM was left on the hook. That stock, they pick and choose, that was turned into worthless stock. I guess all the people who worked up here at, at the old GM plant, if they held on to their stock, it would have been worthless. Federal government foils, fails at, at, at this. Municipalities are just as bad. Hartford is gonna have a fiasco with a yard goat building program. 20 years ago, oh no, 18 years ago, there was a city activist here, and he talked to me and told me about this corporate welfare that occurred in the city, and he, he really even wanted the dissolving the BDA. I don't agree with giving money to people who, just, the people of Bristol deserve the money directly, not business enterprises. I do not agree with you giving these grant monies to these five businesses. I think it is a illegitimate practice. It's pick and choose. It's going to favor people. Thank you.
Thank you. Announcement, starting my far left.
Sorry. I wanna start by congratulating Councilman Damato. He is planning to be married before our next council meeting, so I wanted to make sure that we wished him congratulations. And when I was mentioning this to him earlier, he, he did say, for anyone out there that hasn't returned their RSVP card, they were due yesterday. On a little more serious note, water bills are due in August, and I'm gonna make my usual plug for signing up for online billing. Once again, I'll, I'll say again that if I can do online bill pay, anyone can. And it does save the city money if you deal with your water bill completely online and, you know, eliminate your paper, paper billing. Tax-free shopping comes to Connecticut in a couple of weeks. This year, it is August 21st to 27th, and I know that's helpful to families with back-to-school shopping, but we can all benefit from that, so I just wanted to make sure we don't forget what those dates are. And I would also remind folks that if they haven't done so this summer, if they can give blood before we all get busy and back to fall activities. Blood supply gets dangerously low in the summer, and so I, I've said that a couple times this, this, in the last couple of months. And if you can do that, it's very much appreciated. That's it for me.
Yes, Your Honor, I've got a couple. Just that the Rockwell Festival is gonna be the 20th of August. It's the fifth year of the event already. Again, we urge you to support that as much as possible. And also, prior to that, the week before, that I believe is the Half Marathon, with the benefit of the Fisher House. Anyone that is a, as a runner, or knows of anyone that would like to run, I don't know if you're all familiar with the Fisher House. It's for service people, et cetera. So again, that's an event that's coming up, I believe it's the 11th. So those are the only two events I have.
Councilwoman?
Yes, a few. The carnival is returning to the Mum Festival this year. It's going to be the weekend of September 22nd through the 25th. It's going to be at the Fields for the old MBS. There's gonna be rides, games, food, so be on the lookout for that more next month, and you can visit that at bristlemumfestival.com. The Crocodile Club is having their 135th annual luncheon at Lake Compounds on Friday, August 26th. There will be a social hour at noon, and then lunch begins at 1:00. Tickets are $40. And finally, I'd just like to thank everyone for speaking today, and I especially like to thank Tiffany Howe for her message of positivity. Many of you have heard me over the, in the past few months, say these kinds of messages before. Pointing fingers at what is wrong doesn't make anything better, and what we need is to focus on all the good that we do have in our community, and focus on ways to bring even more positive influences and economic growth to our city, which is what we all need here in Bristol. That's all.
Your Honor, first off, thanks, Councilman Ford. Uh, Councilwoman Ford, I appreciate it. Just one announcement. Gloria Day Church held a tag sale this past Saturday to benefit their backpack project for kids in need. These backpack contains school supplies, and they're each based on grade level. Their goal was 150 backpacks that cover the scope of pre-K to high school. And just want to put three names out there of three young people who helped organize and run this event. Colin Shintao, Amanda Jones, and Zach Miller. So congratulations to those three individuals. It's a great cause, and the city really appreciates everything you're doing. Thank you.
Yes, Your Honor, I have a few, so please bear with me. Just a couple shout-outs to begin with. I'd like to say, good luck to all of the students getting ready to head back to school in a couple of weeks throughout the city, and good luck to the families, too, because I know this can be a hectic time, so good luck. I hope you have a great school year ahead. Also, a shout-out to all of the local businesses who have recently been named in the Reader's Choice Awards from the Bristol Observer. I'd like to give a special shout-out to my friend, our Democratic Town Committee Chairman, and also a former Corporation Council for the City of Bristol, Dean Kilborn, whose law office was named as the Reader's Choice for Best Law Office in the City of Bristol. So I wanted to say congratulations to him. Also, in the First District, the Little League Regional Tournaments continue to be a great success and are ending this weekend, so get out and support if you can. Also, a couple of exciting announcements. The first one, in an effort to promote unity and strengthen the community, Bristol residents Ripley Patton and Steve Bashaw have partnered with the Bristol Police Department, Fire Department, EMTs, and Teachers Union to create a charity event entitled, "We Are One." On Saturday, September 17th at 6:00 p.m., there will be a softball tournament at Casey Field on Lake Avenue. Teams consisting of a mix of police officers, firemen, teachers, and local leaders will play together and engage the public in an effort to show that we really are one. And I just want to make it clear now, while I will be there and I will gladly support the event, you are not gonna get to see me play softball. So that's not gonna happen. Maybe, I don't know. I respect Ripley. He'll keep, he'll keep twisting my arm. Each participant in the tournament will be bringing a donation of a bookbag or school supplies that will be donated to the United Way here in Bristol, and they are asking any spectators to consider doing the same. So again, that's Saturday, September 17th at 6:00 p.m. And there are still roster spots to fill, so anybody in the community, volunteers, business owners, or city representatives interested in playing, you can reach out to me, and I will get you in touch with Ripley so we can get you signed up. Also, Miss Mum Pageant is returning after a four-year hiatus. It will be taking place on September 23rd at 7:00 p.m., opening young ladies aged 6 to 18. There is a link to registration on the Mum Festival webpage, bristlemumfest.com. Also, to Mr. Ruist, I'd like to say quickly, I know we don't always agree on everything, all the city business we take up, and I know our visions for downtown don't necessarily match up, or even our visions for the proper role of government. But I want you to know how much I respect you for coming to these council meetings month after month, sharing information with us that you feel is important, that can help us be guided in our decision-making. I especially appreciate your commitment to open government. You come to these meetings as often as you can to record them and post them on YouTube for people to see, and you've even added a couple team members that go out to even more meetings now to videotape them and post them on YouTube on the Bristol Open Government Project. Is that the correct channel? Despite any philosophical disagreements we might have, that takes a special kind of person to have that kind of commitment for the city, and I really appreciate what you do. So I wanted to say thank you. Okay, and I have just two more on a more serious note. As you all know, tonight, the council will be voting on the charter recommendations and sending them, the final approval of those items and sending them to the ballot. Now, I don't personally believe I am conflicted on that matter. I certainly don't believe that I was conflicted at the June 30th special meeting. I hope I got that date right. But regardless, I know some of my colleagues on the council feel differently, and out of respect for them and out of respect for this body, I just want everybody to know I will happily abstain from that vote tonight. That's not a problem to me. And I just wanted to put that out there. Last thing. Without getting into specifics, because I don't think the specifics are useful. I don't think it's a secret that many people in the community, leaders and employees of the city, recently received and have been receiving anonymous letters with all sorts of information in there that this person who's sending them wants us to consider. So I have a feeling that whoever that person is, is watching tonight or will hear about this meeting later. And I want to make it very clear that sending anonymous letters to elected officials or to members of the public is not useful. We really can't do anything with that information. If you're out there and you have some information you want to share that you think is important, all of our phone numbers are listed, you already have all of our addresses, but you've got to get in touch with us and let us know what exactly it is you want us to know and what you want us to consider about any city business. Otherwise, our hands are tied, and there's nothing we can do. And people are starting to feel harassed by getting anonymous letters in the mail. It's not productive. So many people came up tonight, Republicans and Democrats, and talked about being more positive in the city and trying to be productive. That is not productive. And I wanted to make sure, I would, I would be remiss if I did not say that. And I think, thank you. And I think that is it for announcements from me. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Councilman. I also add, back to school, I know the children are excited, but the parents are excited getting back to school, too.
Yeah, I'm sure.
Sean, you seem to be the spotlight tonight, so I'd like to thank you last month for bringing up, at the council meeting, the city's website. I know you spoke about the, the calendar's not up to date, and the issue that you spoke on last month isn't a city board, but I'm currently in the process of directing staff to provide to the board and commissions, posting all the city meetings on the meeting calendar section on the website. This should be done in the next few weeks, and it's just gonna provide another way for the public to get informed of the city meetings. So hopefully by the next three weeks, all city meetings will be on there, and if they're not, I'm sure you will bring me up to speed on it. Maybe I shouldn't do that, then. Bristol Blues. Bristol Blues finished the season, they did not make the playoffs, but I could tell you the, the Blues exceeded last year's attendance, which is exciting. I don't have the final number yet, but last they told me it did exceed it. They are having a concert, the Bristol Blues present Craig Morgan, who's a country singer, with special guest Scott Stevens, Sunday, September 4th. Gates open at 5:30. Tickets are $35. You could get them the day of the show or online at bristlebluesbaseball.com. BristolBluesBaseball.com. And that is September 4th. The Veterans Strong Community Center is going to be having a poker ride August 20th. Registration begins at 9:00 a.m. at Yankee Harley, and kickstands up at 11:00 a.m., lunches at Schutzhates at 1:00 p.m., and the proceeds are going to go to Veterans Strong. I believe I may be even writing in this, this, it's always a fun time, I may be leading back writing in that. So that's all the announcements that I have. Item number five.
Consent calendar, and there are nine items. Mayor, do you want these read, or would you like to?
Please read them. Please read them.
5A is to place on file the new hire report for July 2016. 5B is to approve the tax refunds dated August 3, 2016. 5C is to award contract 2P16112 engineering services relative to exterior lighting replacement at Bristol Public Schools to Silver Petraselli and Associates Incorporated for $19,150, and to authorize the mayor or acting mayor to execute any documents. 5D is to authorize the mayor or acting mayor to execute a contract for electricity generation from January 1, 2017, through January 30, 2018. 5E is to establish a smoke-free campus for City Hall at 111 North Main Street and the Police Court Complex at 131 North Main Street. 5F is to approve the tax assessment freeze application for 110 Prospect Street LLC, the owner of 108 and 110 Prospect Street, Bristol, for the rehabilitation of a blighted property with the restoration of two separate two-family residences on one lot per Bristol Code of Ordinances, Section 5-57. Item 5G is to approve the tax assessment freeze application for RABR LLC, care of Rob Redman, the owner of 120 Terryville Road, Bristol, for the rehabilitation of a blighted property with the restoration of a commercial structure per Bristol Code of Ordinances, Section 5-57. 5H is to approve the letter of agreement between the City of Bristol and American Red Cross, Connecticut Chapter. Item 5I is to approve the following five economic development grants and to waive the reading of the resolutions, but to include them as part of the minutes. Faneuil Incorporated, a $150,000 grant and potential bonus grant of $50,000. Jovec Tool and Die, a $55,000 grant. Springfield Spring Corporation, a grant up to $13,237. Amco LLC, a $66,000 grant. Connecticut Portable Storage LLC, a $150,000 grant.
Motion to accept.
Your Honor, before we do that, could Your Honor, before we do that, could I ask that we pull off item D, please?
Okay, motion, item D's off. Motion to approve items A through C and E through I.
So moved.
Motion made, seconded, discussion.
Yes, Your Honor, I'd like to just discuss C also.
C, go ahead. Take it off for discussion.
I'd just like to discuss.
Okay, go ahead.
This is a situation I think has been going on for a while, and I'm glad that they got this grant that's been, if you've been to any of the high schools or some of the school properties, the lighting is less than adequate. I know that there was an accident there a year ago where someone fell coming out of, off one of the fields. So this grant is going to be terrific as far as improving the lighting at the facilities and especially now that there's going to be games on these fields coming up, the lighting is going to be improved and the parking lot's going to be improved, so it's going to be a benefit to everybody. So I think it's a great thing.
And Mr. Mayor, I'd like to discuss E if I could. It's to establish a smoke-free campus for City Hall and the Court and Police Complex. We discussed this in the Building Committee, and going to the Court very often through my business, I can say that when you walk outside, people are standing there smoking much of the time. Making it a smoke-free complex is going to be beneficial to everybody.
Yes. Your Honor, I'd like to discuss item I, if you don't mind. I have a few things that we have written down here, so if you don't mind, I'm going to read them. Out of the five, there are two grants to two different, two different companies that I want to discuss in a little detail, one being Joe Vec Tool &amp; Die. They're currently located in Waterbury. The plans are to purchase and renovate a 22,000-square-foot manufacturing facility currently located at 474 Birch Street. Just so you know what this piece of property is. This has been sitting for a while, and you know, it's run down, so they're going to spend a lot of money. This is one piece of property that's been sitting idle for years that we're going to put back on the list, okay? Here. They're going to bring a full-time staff to Bristol with plans to add several new positions in coming years. I just want to make a note, I'm not going to let you know the number, but this property is in tax arrears. That's obviously going to get repaid to the city, so this is a win-win for the city for Joe Vec Tool &amp; Die. The other one I'd like to discuss is Fanial, which is the call center that will be locating downtown. They propose to establish its northeast New England presence by leasing approximately 38,000 square feet of office space at 32 Valley Street, referred to as the old Signa Building. Fanial plans to pursue additional space within the building as it expands. Fanial will invest over $700,000 to renovate the office space and more than $2.5 million on new furniture, fixtures, and equipment. Fanial plans to hire 150 individuals initially to staff the call center, with plans to grow at least 250 full-time positions in the near future. So I heard some comments about the type of demographic in the area in which this particular business is located, you know, jobs are coming. And what I want to make a note is, on all of these grants, there are approximately 400 jobs being created, most of which are being located downtown. So I can't think of a more, of a win-win situation than what we're, than what we're going to vote on tonight. It's a no-brainer, in my opinion. Not everyone has to agree with that, but I am more than willing to cast my vote tonight for these economic development grants in the name of approximately 400 new jobs in this town. So, that's all I have to discuss on that, Mayor.
Any other discussion?
Yes, Your Honor, actually. Quick question. Mr. Tomato, Fanial, did I pronounce that correctly?
Fanial.
Fanial. That's the new call center on Valley Street?
Correct.
Okay. Corp Counsel, I've got a question for you. My brother has just been hired as one of the new Bristol employees there. Am I okay to vote on this, or should I not vote on this? I should have asked you sooner, but it didn't actually occur to me that that's...
I think, Councilman, that you're probably okay on that, since he's not a resident of your home, I assume, although maybe that's a bad assumption, I'm not sure.
Right.
And even if he was, I think he's probably an independent source. I think you're okay under the Charter and the ordinance.
Okay.
I'll go to bat for you anytime on that issue.
Okay, all right.
Okay, let me also say, in regards to these grants, this is huge for Bristol. This just goes to show all the hard work that the Marketing Committee has been doing, the BDA, led by Justin Malley and his assistant Kristin Gorsky, is paying off. We continue to bring jobs into Bristol. We can do, you know, to help businesses grow that are in Bristol, but more importantly, we're bringing new businesses into Bristol. So this is huge, and I'm excited that this is coming here, and I'll give out grants all day if we could continue to bring jobs to Bristol. All in favor of items A, B, C, E through I?
Aye.
I. All opposed. Motion passes. Item D, Councilman?
Okay, so just quickly, this item is discussing the purchasing of electricity contracts on the city side, which is something that the Board of Ed is also planning to do soon. But they're looking to buy their contracts from July 2018, out a few more years than what the city was currently looking at under this item as it's listed now, which is good for a couple reasons. And if we can sync our purchase of electricity contracts with the term of the Board of Ed, it could potentially lead to cost savings for the city and some energy savings as well. So, I'd like to sort of amend this motion to read as follows. To authorize the mayor or acting mayor to execute a contract for electricity generation for the period from January 1, 2017, through a term up to June 30, 2021, as recommended by the purchasing agent and/or the Connecticut Conference of Municipalities.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made, seconded, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Item number six.
It's reports and committee reports, but there are...
Let's take each of these individual, please.
To approve or reject the final report of the Charter Revision Commission regarding the following proposed charter changes. Section 12 to require that elected officials remain residents and electors of the city or their district during their term of office, which will take effect on or after November 7, 2017.
Let the record show, Councilman Brown is leaving the room. Can I motion to approve?
Approved. So moved, Trump.
Do I have a second?
A second, and again, this is just on?
Item one only.
A, I, one.
Yes.
Yes, okay.
A1. Six, A1. Motion made and seconded, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Tom, can you get, Councilman, please? Item number six, A2.
Section 46A, to revise the procedures for promotion in the Police Department.
Per our Charter Revision Council meeting, the council voted to ask the Charter Revision to remove this, so can I, and they brought it forward still, can I have a motion to reject item 6A2?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, discussion. Hearing none.
I have some discussion. I just, for the record, want to let folks know that I did send an email to counsel and Attorney Conlon, who was assisting the Charter Revision Committee, and I'm not sure who else, it might have been Therese, that I CC'd on that, asking that Charter Revision Commission members be here today, tonight, to explain to us why we voted unanimously to reject this item or to send it back to them, and they sent it back to us with no comment at all. I mean, I was looking for just even one sentence as to why they felt this should be included. There was absolutely no comment or no minutes, no explanation whatsoever why they wanted to continue with this. So I'm very much in favor of rejecting it, particularly because I don't believe that any Charter Revision Commission members are here. If they are and I'm missing them, I would certainly welcome their comments.
Any other discussion? All in favor to reject? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Item 63.
Section 46B, to eliminate the residency requirement for the Chief of Police and substitute it with residents within a town, any part of which falls within a 20-mile radius of Police Headquarters, and to modify procedures for recruitment and examination of the Chief of Police.
Can I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, discussion.
I'd like to discuss. I will be voting no on this one, and I've talked to the Police Chief about this, and he understands my reasoning for it. A few years ago, when it was on the ballot, I was one of the many people who voted in favor of having the Police Chief and the Fire Chief live here in Bristol. I think it's important to have the department heads, especially for the Police and Fire, to be a part of our community and have some kind of stake in our town, and that's why I will be voting against it tonight.
And have the discussion.
Yes, Your Honor, quickly. I want to make it clear to the public that personally, as a voter and as a resident of Bristol, I don't have a problem with the Police Chief living in a 25-mile or 50-mile radius of, or 20-mile radius, excuse me, of the city at all. That doesn't bother me. But as an elected person, I second what Councilwoman Gagnon brought up, and that is that this is something that the voters already voted on just a few years ago, and it was an overwhelming statement from the public that they preferred that the chief live in town. Now, while I disagree with the public on that particular item, as an elected person, I feel like I have to, I think it would be wrong to send this question back to the public after having just decided on it a few years ago. So I am going to vote no on this. I think from the sounds of it, it's probably going to get on the ballot anyway, and then, in full transparency, I have no problem saying this, I will vote in favor of it when it's on the ballot, but that's sort of the tricky position of being in this sort of an office. So I hope that that's clear. That being said, I think in these past several weeks and several months, and with all that's happening in the world, I think I speak for the entire council, and I say regardless of this particular item, we are all so incredibly proud of our new chief, Brian Gould, and everything he's doing for the city, and we are God blessed to have him in the position he is now.
Councilman, I just want to clarify, and I could be wrong, maybe Corp Counsel could help me, but when this was on the ballot before, it did not have the...
The radius, yeah.
The radius, it was just, I think, an open-ended.
Open-ended, I agree.
So that's what's a little different on it.
Agreed.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing, let's take a roll call vote. Hearing none, roll call vote, starting at my far right.
No.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion passes. Item number four.
Section 42K, to eliminate the residency requirement for the Fire Chief and substitute it with residents within a town, any part of which falls within a 20-mile radius of Fire Headquarters.
Motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, discussion. I'm assuming same discussion?
Your Honor, quickly, now, my memory is not as clear on this one. Was the Fire Chief also on the ballot a couple of years ago, or was it just the Police?
They were, they both were.
They both were, that's what I thought, okay, all right. So same logic applies for this one.
Again, same logic applies.
Okay, let's do a roll, any other discussion? Roll call, starting at my far right.
No.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion passes. Any other reports or committees, Councilwoman?
Just one for me. Again, I mentioned this last month. Bristol's community organization, called BCO, as most of us know it by the basically social service organization that provides networking and services to basically usually poorer folks, sometimes elderly folks, is in the process of working on a merger with the New Britain counterpart, which I believe is called HRA, which I think is the Human Resource Agency, I think that's what that stands for. In other words, because, primarily because of cuts in federal and state funding, by merging the two organizations, they'll be able to run what they run now, which are basically similar programs for multi-town areas. In other words, New Britain covers multi-towns, and we currently cover multi-towns, but they're going to merge their administration, basically, and they're still going to provide services in Bristol. And that's an ongoing thing, the two boards are working on how that's going to work. Tom Morrow, who currently heads BCO, is expected to retire when the merger is complete. He's served in some capacity in social services in Bristol for probably over 40 years, and he's going to be sorely missed, just as a wealth of knowledge and how things have run in the social service world. But I want to make sure that if folks have questions about whether services are going to continue to be provided in Bristol, which they certainly are, to contact BCO or look on their website, or to call me, ask questions, because we don't want people thinking that somehow BCO is going to be lessened or limited. We're hoping it's actually going to be able to expand. By saving some money with administration, they'll be able to do more of some of the programs that they currently do. Thanks, that's it.
I have a couple of reports. The first is from the Marketing Committee, and I've got a motion. You may have read in the paper a couple of weeks ago that, you may not have known this, but there was, the last three years, there's been an agreement between the city and the Chamber of Commerce to have a, to house our marketing program at the Chamber. Well, the, that has come, it's about to come to an end, and the Marketing Committee, or the marketing program, is going to continue. And one of the things that, that spent a lot of time on in the last year or so was the development of the All Heart website. And what has happened is that we are now, through the Chamber's efforts, we are now in the, we are now actively seeking, and it actually happened today, I believe, didn't it Cindy, we're able to get the ownership of it, okay? So that now that is going to be in the ownership of the city. And what I'd like is to just have a motion to authorize the mayor or acting mayor to execute a contract with A Squared Studios LLC in the amount of $5,850 for website design, maintenance, hosting services related to the Bristol All Heart site. And again, what this is for, is this is monies that's being spent, of which the Chamber is spending some of the money to do this. That's going to bring the site over that, and it's going to bring it into, under our direction of the city, and then the marketing position will be here and they'll be able to direct that, so.
So we have a motion, do I have a second?
We have a motion.
Second.
Motion made, seconded.
Any discussion?
Councilman Mills, if I could just ask you a question?
Sure.
And just for the record, I plan on voting yes for this, but in case you have the information, we're merely changing ownership of the website from Chamber of Commerce to city, correct?
That's one of the things that's happening, and then what we're doing is we're actively asking A Squared Studio, which is a Connecticut company, to take over the management of the, the maintenance and the design.
Okay, and...
Go ahead.
The only reason why I'm asking is because of the $5,000 allotment. Are they going to be refreshing the website, or is there other things included in there?
Well, part of that is the fee for A Squared to take it over from the firm in New York, and the Chamber is paying $5,000 of that, of that fee.
Okay.
So basically, the rest of it is for hosting and maintenance.
Okay, thanks.
And I just want to reiterate what Dave said, the Councilman said that this is, this is bringing it in-house. It was a pilot program we tried with the Chamber, and it's really ballooned into something, I think, great, and now it's time to take our baby that's grown up and bring it over where it could be managed and continue to formulate and continue to promote Bristol and what's happening in our community. So this is a positive thing, not a negative thing. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
The other report I have is from the School Readiness Council. There's a couple of events that are happening. On August 18th, the Countdown to Kindergarten, which is a 9:30 to 11:30 program with the Bristol Public Library. Our collaborative partners are the Bristol Early Childhood Alliance, the Bristol Public Library, the Bristol Board of Education, and Summer Meals. This event is for incoming kindergarten students and their parents, and you must register for this event. Then on August 24th, the Ice Cream Truck and Book Distribution will take place. Again, it's the collaborative partners are the Bristol Early Childhood Alliance and the Bristol Board of Education for the hard-to-reach families. An ice cream truck makes its way to specific, at specific times, to specific locations in Bristol, representing the elementary schools. Staff from each school meet the families of the ice cream truck, remind them at the start of the school year, of the start of the school year, and every child receives a book. The school alerts families about time and neighborhoods in this event. And again, you would think that everyone knows when school starts, but it's amazing how many people show up the first day of school and they had no idea that they were supposed to register. And that certainly makes it a situation that is, if you can avoid, very important to do. And then on August 29th and 30th, the Bristol School Readiness 2016 Early Childhood Community Conference, this is a two-day event being held at the Bristol Boys and Girls Club on 225 West Street. It's a two-day program full of workshops for early care and education teaching and support of staff in Bristol. Presently, there's close to 100 participants registered for each day. Workshops to include early learning development standards, developmentally appropriate practice, observations, and documents... observations and documentation, self-regulation strategies, strategies to support children's social, emotional development, becoming powerful thinkers, and why and how of engaged learning. Again, we have a very fruitful, a very important early childhood program here in Bristol that makes a tremendous difference for those that are showing up and those that are participating in our all-day kindergarten. And the kids that come into this program or from these programs are much more prepared, and therefore, obviously, the transition to kindergarten is much, much more beneficial, and the teachers are able to get on and be able to do what they have to do. So that's all I have.
Okay, Councilwoman?
Thank you. Well, first, Dave, I'd like to say that the first day of school is September first, and I'm looking forward to it, and I can't wait.
Your son's shaking his head.
From the park board, our outdoor pools close next Sunday for the season, but our water spray parks will remain open until Labor Day, as long as there isn't a water ban in town. The final outdoor summer concert will be held next Tuesday at seven o'clock at The Patch. It is Latonya Farrell who sings pop, soul, R and B, and dance. The baseball season has ended, I'd like to say congratulations to the Bristol Blues, it's always great to see games there at Muzzy, and the first football game is going to start on September tenth at Muzzy. There will be a pooch plunge at the Rockwell Pool on Monday, August twenty-second, from four-thirty to six-thirty, and the youth fall programs begin, the third week of September, registration begins on August twelfth. From the Memorial Boulevard Building Committee, we had a meeting last night, we gave the architect the go-ahead for an approximately eight-hundred-seat theater, which includes a lobby, a coatroom, and concessions on the first floor of the building. And now that we have approved that design as the Memorial Boulevard Building Committee, we can get a better idea of how much it's actually going to cost. So going back to the Joint Board, for anyone who was here, John Smith had stated that we might need a special Joint Board meeting from Marie O'Brien and from Frank Stausky to present to us how much everything is going to cost and where everything is going to go, and I am definitely in favor of that. I would be, however, in favor of waiting until we have the actual cost from the architect, from the construction managers before doing so, but I think it would be beneficial to everybody on the board to hear from everybody all at the same time. Thank you.
Councilman?
We already discussed pretty much everything, so none.
Councilman?
Yes, a couple items from the Youth Services Bureau first. By way of sort of a quick shout-out or announcement, I'll say that it's the twenty-year anniversary of the Pine Lake Challenge Course's summer program, Challenge Quest, which is an outdoor adventure and leadership program that serves between sixty and eighty youth of all ages every year. So twenty years is pretty impressive. The Youth Services has also been working with the New Beginnings Program and the First Congregational Church to help supply middle school and some high school students with back-to-school clothing and book bags. The department coordinates with United Way, which assists elementary school children primarily. And the need is great this year, and there are still children in need of the basics who have not been adopted. Families have been referred to other organizations and churches who are assisting with the backpacks. Still, there are growing numbers of children who are in need of a new outfit appropriate for school and a sturdy backpack to carry a heavy load. If anyone would like to sponsor a child, you can call the Youth Services offices and find out how at eight-six-zero-three-one-four-four-six-nine-zero. Also, Youth Services staff have been particularly busy with running a range of recreational programs in the community to combat idleness among middle-school-aged students and engage them in constructive leisure-time activities with positive adult mentors, which is a very important initiative. Some of these programs are run in partnership with the Bristol Police Department and the Bristol Boys and Girls Club, which is just another example of a great community partnership between the city and the community and the Bristol Police Department. Also, Youth Services staff trying their best to facilitate a positive youth development programs to prepare high school students for the responsibilities of living independently as an adult, and producing results-based accountability reports on the services provided. So it's a pretty thorough report from the Youth Services Commission, courtesy of the Director Eileen McNulty. Quickly, also, from the Mayor's Task Force on Energy Consumption, I know I've mentioned before that the Commission, or the Task Force, excuse me, is working on crafting a series of policy recommendations for the city about some different ways, things you might be able to do differently, ways you might be able to look at policies a little differently to realize some energy cost savings for the city of Bristol in the future. You know, the whole world's trying their best to become more energy-efficient in everything they do. The city of Bristol is doing the best they can to be ahead of that curve, and that's going to be coming in the form of some recommendations for us to consider, policy recommendations for the City Council to consider. So as a heads-up for you guys, we'll probably be able to make a presentation of some of those recommendations in the next couple of months at a City Council meeting, and we'll schedule that. And that is it for committee announcements, for me.
Just very quickly, if you've driven by Eastern or Central High Schools, just a quick report, I know Ed's out there, and he could probably give a much better job of giving the report, but I know that Bristol Central's pretty far ahead now as far as the artificial field. I think stone, they started to put down stone, didn't they, Ed, yesterday, they're starting to be leveled out, et cetera, they're putting in some of the pits, et cetera, they'll be doing that. It seems to be on schedule. I know at Eastern today, they were down, they were putting the drain all the way around the perimeter of the track, and that'll be cemented in place tomorrow, so that they'll be able to fix that drains or do the drains next week. They're scheduled, I believe, right now for the first week of September to start laying the turf, I believe, correct? So I think they're, they're on schedule, and hopefully, they'll be ahead of schedule and be able to utilize everything, so.
Excellent. Unfinished business, starting at my far left.
None for me.
None for me.
None.
None, Your Honor.
Yes, quickly, Attorney Kerwicki, I appreciate you helping me out earlier with that item under the consent calendar, but I would like two things. The first thing is, at the last special City Council meeting, I know you weren't able to attend, but as a matter of transparency and for the public, I would like you to state on the record, if you would, why the City Council was not able to review this Rose Report prior to our meeting. I've received a lot of questions why, and I think it would be good, without getting into the specifics of the report, why we weren't able to view it ahead of time, because I understand there is a reason.
The, as you know, Councilman and everyone, the matter was referred out from our office to outside counsel. We thought that because of the obvious conflict our office has, and in order to be transparent on our end, we wanted to ensure that we weren't going to be distributing information in advance. The outside counsel had been providing us with detailed analysis of the law, the risks, the responsibilities of all of you, us, and everyone else in city government with the improper dissemination of information, and it was thought the best and most prudent advice was to deliver a, to have the outside counsel and the individuals who conducted the investigation deliver one time to all of you at the same time, the information, so that no one could glean anything different from it.
Okay.
So I think that's a fair summary of why.
And I appreciate you putting that on the record for us, but I also want the record to reflect, so that there's no uncertainty, that that is not an explanation, well, first thing I'll say is I'm not the only counselor that asked to see in advance. And the second thing I'll say on the record is that is not an explanation that was shared with us before we went into that executive session, and I don't appreciate that from where I sit. The second thing I'd like you to explain, Attorney Kerwicki, why, when I asked you for the phone number for the outside counsel that has been retained to deal with this matter?
And get that message until after your meeting.
Okay. I appreciate you putting that on the record.
And unfinished business?
No, no more for me.
Okay. Let me just say that we continue to work with the Board of Ed as far as consolidation. We have another meeting scheduled tomorrow, and we're working, we're right now targeting for, for areas that we believe we could, we could have potential savings through consolidation without laying anyone off. This will be done through attrition and other means, so we continue to work with the Board of Ed, looking for savings on, on all of our budgets.
Can I just ask a question, Your Honor? When you say "we," is there a specific committee that's trying to work on Board of Ed and city efficiencies, working, you know, together to purchase things or?
Myself, the superintendent, and a couple other department heads, working amongst the two organizations.
Okay, thank you.
Item number, new business, starting at my far right.
No new business for me.
None, Your Honor.
None.
None.
Councilman?
None for me, thank you.
None for me. Resignations.
There's one resignation, it's from Shirley Anderson from the Bristol School Readiness Council.
Motion to accept and send a letter of thank you.
So moved.
Motion remains second to discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Appointments. Mayor's Task Force on HIV/AIDS, mayor's appointment to appoint Lorene Johnson to replace Dawn Fenmore, resigned, no term. To appoint Gabrielle Galanis to replace Joan Marks, retired, one sixteen, no term. Building Code Board of Appeals, to reappoint James Brown, five-year term, to eight twenty-one.
Motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion remains second to discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Bristol Historic District, to appoint Patty Philippon to replace Denise Albert as an alternate member since she was made regular member, unexpired term to one twenty.
So moved.
Second.
Motion remains second to discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Housing Authority of City of Bristol, mayor's appointment to appoint Andrew Time to replace Joshua Flores, resigned, unexpired term to twelve twenty. This will take effect September one, two thousand and sixteen, he's going to be on vacation at the next meeting, and he won't be able to make it. Bristol School Readiness, to appoint, to appoint, to reappoint the members of the school, actually, you've got to read both, to appoint or reappoint the members of the School Readiness Council, list is attached, and the council should have gotten that list, it's got to be close to five o'clock tonight.
Yeah.
Too many names that I don't want to read, unless you guys want to write into the record.
That's fine.
Okay. Youth Commission, to appoint Michaela Moham to replace Taylor Dale, section two-nine resignation, unexpired term to twelve eighteen.